I will call the Riverside Township Board of Trustees Meeting of October 13th to order. Please rise and trustee Clark, would you read us a little pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the roll call of the board, please.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Supervisor Will.
Present.
Let the record note that trustee Morrissey and trustee Blough are not in attendance and clerk Drapka is in attendance.
Thank you very much. The, in your packets, you have the minutes of the September 8th board meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to approve the minutes of the September 8th Board of Trustees Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next item is the, are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting from Wednesday, October the 5th. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion where you approve the minutes of the special, or the Committee of the Whole Meeting for October 5th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 5th. Are there any additions, corrections, or discussion? Hearing none, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, are there any communications?
Yes, we have one communication. It's a letter from trustee Tom Morrissey wishing to inform us that on September 9th, he was advised by the chief judge of the Circuit Court of Cook County that he had been elected to the Circuit Court Judges as an associate judge, and he takes his oath to office October 4th, 2021. Accordingly, I wish to formally tender my resignation from the Riverside Township Board of Trustees. I wish you, the board, and the township the best of luck in the future. Signed, trustee Tom Morrissey.
Thank you very much. Is there any other correspondence?
There is none.
We will deal with that correspondence a little later on the agenda, so thank you. And now we will proceed to, are there any public comments? Nope. And so then the supervisors' report, nothing earth-shaking, but I just want to report that the, regarding the food pantry, the farmer's market had similar results to last year. Over 66% of the vouchers which we issued were used. We are going to modify those vouchers a bit next year so that the vendors will more easily recognize the difference between our vouchers and food pantry appointment cards. This year, there were a couple of instances where I, they accidentally took an appointment card. In the whole scheme of things, I don't think anybody actually benefited. I think in some cases, they lost the voucher. It seemed like there was a missing voucher, but we will be more careful so that they don't feel like, oh, my gosh, I took the wrong card. The Riverside Junior Women's Charity has selected our pantry to receive donations in their seasonal fundraising, and they've been advertising as such, so they even have set up a signup genius where people can specifically note what they're going to be bringing. Just a note to anyone who is listening, donations on the, to the food pantry need to be shelf-stable as our utilization is unpredictable. Today, for example, someone left a prepared meal in a box, which was lovely, but we can't deliver that to anyone. Occasionally, we get some perishable donations, like bread or baked goods, if it's something that would spoil immediately. We make sure that the next couple of clients take those items. And we recently received some frozen pastries that are then thawed and allowed to rise and bake. They were part of a school fundraiser, and I got a call in advance that a grandparent wanted to support the fundraiser but didn't want all that pastry, so they donated it, and we, already last week, we gave away about half of them. When we know in advance that people are coming, then we can bring them down from the freezer and have them ready. This Saturday, a reminder, is our shredding event. It is, that'll be Saturday, October 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, in the Masonic Lodge parking lot at 40 Forest Avenue. If any of the board members will be there, please let me know after the meeting so that we can plan accordingly. We have, in our publicity this time, requested donations to the food pantry as well, so depending on how generous people are, we may need to make a run here with a carload of things during the course of the day. Otherwise, I'll take care of it at the end of the event. Many thanks to anybody in advance who will participate by bringing a can or two for the food pantry. Just some observations on general assistance. I'm starting to see that GA clients are, the numbers are shrinking because people are starting to get hired again, but it takes a little while for them to get their first paycheck. Some companies hold back the first month, and in other cases, they have to ramp up to their hours, so, but slowly but surely, I've got people that are coming off of general assistance. Of course, now with some of the other supplementary support, instead, I'm seeing more emergency assistance requests, especially because utilities are now enforcing shut-offs. So, that's the way it goes. We take it a day at a time, and we help as, as we can. Just a comment, we, internally in the office, we've talked about possibly upgrading our security camera system and such, and we're going to be looking at a proposal. We had, second time since the pandemic started, we had kind of an incident yesterday of somebody running through the building, screaming some obscenities, throwing some literature around, opening our door, throwing it in, screaming, "Wake up, people," and then taking off, you know. It was reported to the police. Fortunately, there's enough cameras around, you know, our cameras can see something happening, but we'd like to have a little better cameras.
A little enhanced.
Yep, yeah. So, that, this happened both to the village and us. The person tore through and then left, but it does make people a little bit uncomfortable. So, we are going to possibly upgrade that. Otherwise, just regular business going on. If you have any questions, then maybe some item I've forgotten, I'd be happy to respond, but most items are on the agenda.
I'll be at the shredding event on Saturday.
Great, thank you very much.
And I'll be there, but I got to leave at 11:30.
Okay, well, we appreciate any help.
I'll be there.
And it kind of, once we get it set up, it kind of, it runs pretty smoothly in the shredding company.
And not, I mean, maybe, maybe Leanne can, you know, you can get a contact.
I don't know. If she's not working, she'll probably be there.
Do you want me to bring a folding table to collect the canned goods?
Uh, maybe. I was gonna bring some bins. I was gonna, so that it's easier just to grab, fill them, and, and probably just milk crate type of bins, but I'll see what I can muster. I have a number.
I've got some old boxes that are not, that I can bring.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, anything that you can help that you think would be supportive of it, that'd be great. Thank you. Trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
I have two items. I'm just, the exercise classes are going very well. Monday, the average between 22 and 24 people, Wednesday between 20 and 21, and Friday between 15 and 18, which I think is really, really good.
Very good.
So, I'm very happy. Everybody seems to be happy that that's going well.
Very good.
And the other thing that I want to bring up is there is that chess club that meets in Guthrie Park on Wednesdays from 5:00 to 7:00, which I think, and anybody can come. I think it's very cool, but now that the weather's getting cooler, I was wondering if we should invite the chess club to come in and use the room that they play bridge in. Is that room 3?
That would, room 30.
Room 30.
Right.
Which is on the third floor.
Mm-hmm. It's already set up with like hard tables, so that probably would be the same kind of setup, and it would be later the same day if they meet on Wednesdays. Do you have any contact person for that?
I do have the name of the guy who runs it.
Okay.
And I think there was an article on the Landmark about it, wasn't there, or?
I will go through, I think so.
But if not, but I do, I do have the guy who runs its name.
Okay.
As a Facebook friend.
Okay, well, let's, let's put our heads together. I think it'd be fine, you had mentioned it to me, said, "Bring it up here." We've checked, I mean, those Wednesdays, the morning and early afternoon are always the bridge club in that same room, and like I said, it shouldn't be any big change to set up, so, other than possibly when there's a big rush of clients for the assessor's office, it should work pretty well, and if they're a community group, you know, we, we would welcome them to be here.
Yeah, as I said, I, currently, they were meeting from 5:00 to 7:00, and I don't know, they may even have a place to go in the winter. I just thought I'd throw that out because I think this is such a cool thing.
Absolutely.
And, you know, be nice for our community.
Yeah, it would. Thank you. Anything else? Then, if that's it, then trustee Heilenbach, do you have some, something to share?
I do have a few items for the board this evening. Number one is later in, later on in our agenda under new business, number F, Joe DeRozier is going to be appointed to a mental health board. Joe is from North Riverside, which is filling a vacancy we had in North Riverside. He has a child with special needs and is very familiar with the agencies that we deal with. I think Joe will be a great addition to the mental health board. The 988 program, which is the one where you dial 988, and it's going to set you up with a clinician, or a clinician comes to your, comes to the house, is six to eight weeks behind schedule. We expect that to get worse as time goes on, so that gives us just a little more time to get a few, few things buttoned down on how the township wants to run things, and that is in coordination with the local police and fire departments, which we are in contact with. Aging Care Connections Executive Director is nominating the CRC for an Innovative Program Award with the Townships of Illinois. We're very happy about that. That's a, that's a big honor. We don't know if we're gonna win, but she is nominating us, so that's a, that's a great thing. WSSRA had 141 people participating in 12 virtual and 23 in-person programs.
Wow.
For the last quarter. If you recall, WSSRA is our special recreation, that we take care of half of the fees for the recreation program, and if they need transportation, we take care of half of the transportation for these special needs people. We are very excited about that. I'm very happy about that. We, of course, will continue this program as we've promised to our residents of Riverside Township. The teen texting program has been picked up by other school districts in the area, and that resulted in an $11,000 reduction in fees for us on the mental health board, which was great. This year, some of that will be eaten up because Hauser and St. Mary's, NAMI is approaching them to get them on board. As I've said before in these meetings, the mental health issues are not getting any better, they're getting worse. I hear it all day long on my pager, so this helps, and it helps a lot. So, as I get information, I usually get it every quarter, or every, you know, school quarter, I will pass that along to the board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we will move on to unfinished business, and it's still unfinished. I don't have any more news on the swinging bridge repairs, other than there was another interested, a vendor, somebody who was interested in, a contractor who was interested in more information on the job. I connected them with the, with our architectural firm, with API, and so far, I haven't heard whether they got any numbers together, but they were communicating with each other, and so I'm hopeful that we'll have at least one more bid so that possibly we can get the job done as soon as possible. I, I'm not very hopeful that this season will allow it to happen, you know, we're already into.
It's gonna have to be next spring, Supervisor Will.
Right.
I mean, this is way too late.
It is.
It's getting colder, it's getting more wet.
Right.
If we're gonna do the job, let's do it right.
Absolutely.
As I said, we've all stated.
Right.
Let's do it right.
Right, all right. Well, right into the level that we can afford.
Right.
All right. So, that's all I have to report on that. I did have an inquiry from the Landmark today about the progress, and I had to tell them the very same thing I've just told you, that unfortunately, we haven't had a lot. They, they wondered why, I thought, that was a problem. I said, "The size of the job, maybe too, too big for small firms and too small for big ones," and, and I'm sure that the supply chain and worker shortage are also an issue.
I agree with that.
So, anyway, onward to new business, if there's nothing more about that item. And the first item there is, you heard the resignation letter from Thomas Morrissey from this board, and it is up to this board now to accept that resignation. That's when the time clock starts running for, for the replacement. So, I will entertain a motion to accept the correspondence or the resignation of Thomas A. Morrissey from this board.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to accept the formal resignation, and I don't know that there's anything more to discuss, he's already on the bench. So, we, we did discuss a process, and we'll discuss that in another item here about how we will fill that vacancy. So, with the acceptance of this, of this resignation, we hereby would declare a vacancy on this board.
Todd, do you have to make a vote?
Yes. So, all in favor of the acceptance of this resignation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Regretfully, but more, very good wishes to trustee Morrissey, or former trustee Morrissey. The next item is the procedures. So, this, this vacancy now needs to be filled within 60 days. We've put the wheels in motion, so I have posted in today's Landmark, as well as in the township, and on our website, and on Facebook, we have posted the notice of the procedures to fill the vacancy, which includes, I'll just read it, it's the simplest way, notice of vacancy and procedures to fill the vacancy. Riverside Township hereby gives notice that a vacancy will be declared for the position of township trustee at the October 13th regular meeting of the Riverside Township Board. At that meeting, the board will accept the September letter of resignation of trustee Tom Morrissey, who has been appointed as an associate judge of the Cook County Circuit Court. The board invites letters of interest with resumes to fill the vacancy. Resumes must be submitted no later than 3:00 p.m. on Friday, October 29th, 2021. In-person during business hours, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., or Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the township office in the town hall at 27 Riverside Road, Riverside, the first door on the left. Or by mail to Vera A. Wilt, Supervisor, Riverside Township, 27 Riverside Road, Riverside, Illinois 60546. Or by email to supervisor@riversidetownship.org. The board will interview interested parties by appointment, and that is expected for Tuesday, November 2nd, at the town hall. So, that, as I said, was posted in several places today in anticipation of the, this board's activity. Any comments or any?
Straightforward.
I believe that about, we were talking about roughly a half an hour would suffice for each candidate.
I think so.
So, we'll make that scheduled, depending on how many we get. I have had two expressions of interest so far, and that was even before this was posted, so.
I know that there's several other people that are interested.
I'm sure, I'm sure there will be, so we will, we'll take that as it comes along.
Could we start that at 7:00, or is that too late?
That's way too late. If we've got five people at a half hour apiece, or six, I say, to be honest with you, I think that we should either keep it at 6:30 or start it at 6:00.
I'm gonna ask that we start it at 6:30. I'm flying back from Denver. My plane lands at 5:20 at Midway.
Okay.
And I can just, I'll have carry-on luggage, so I can just grab an Uber and come straight here.
Thank you. Yeah, let's try for the 6:30.
So, I might be a little late for the first.
Sure. No, 5:20, you might, hopefully you would make it, especially if you don't have to wait for luggage, but I can understand where you wouldn't want us to schedule it for 6:00. So, if.
You don't schedule it for 6:00.
We can start the first one at 6:30.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you accommodating me.
Absolutely, so we will start at 6:30. Any other discussion regarding that item?
And I, should my plans change, which they do frequently, and I can be here, and we do want to start at 6:00, I can give you a call?
Well, if that's gonna be a Committee of the Whole Meeting, we've discussed this.
Right, and it's already, I mean, as.
It's already on at 6:30, so we'll just.
Okay, all right, 6:30.
Yeah, it's a normally, it's a regularly scheduled meeting, Committee of the Whole. That's just, that will be the only item on the agenda that evening. Okay, if there's nothing else on that topic, then we will move on to item C, the approval of a special event request for a birthday party. You have the room request, and it is for Saturday, November 13th, that's one month from today, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and it's for the auditorium as well as the kitchen. And it, since this does include special use, they anticipate the service of liquor. All the other rules, of course, would apply that are normally done that way. So, I need the approval of this board for this event.
Have they provided all these, all the stuff that they need to?
Well, they are working on getting us all that. It will not be approved ultimately unless they provide all the things that we need.
I make a motion that we approve the special, special use application for the Gutierrez family, providing that they provide all the necessary, make all the necessary arrangements in terms with our agreement.
Right.
To do that.
They won't be selling, so they don't need to involve the village, but they do have to provide the insurance coverage because the alcohol and food will be served. Okay, then I will entertain a motion to.
You don't have a second.
Yeah, I, I will, yeah, entertain a second. I have a motion, I will entertain a second, to approve this. I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the special use of the auditorium and kitchen on November 13th, 2021. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll on this one, clerk?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next item is preliminary discussion, we don't have to approve this now. There are new holidays being, being enacted every, every month, it seems, so, this is just a proposal for some scheduling for next year. We still have our clerk in the same situation of having a conflict of meetings in his regular job and this position. So, this schedule, rather than going to the second Wednesday as we did for the remainder of this year, this is actually going to the Wednesday after the second Tuesday. That way, we'll never run into the consecutive Committee of the Whole Meetings immediately followed by the regular meeting.
Is that gonna interfere with the mental health board?
No, it should, mm, yeah, I see there is one. There's only one that would.
Okay.
So, that's, and that's why it's here, for the, for your review and discussion. So, we'll need to change the June 1, that could be the, the second Wednesday then. Any other, any other errors you see? We did not, so we looked at the calendar and how the township officials of Illinois have been scheduling their meetings. They've been remote, whether it'll be virtual next year, they've kind of gotten used to doing that, or whether they'll actually call a meeting. They have been typically doing the third week, and we have, it was, it usually ended by Tuesday, so people were still traveling, and that's why we always moved that one to the third Tuesday rather than the second, but this time, if we do it the way we were talking about, the Wednesday following the second Tuesday, that, that would not interfere, so that one is okay. So, please check if, in almost all cases, of course, this year, we had a conflict on a couple of times with the remainder of the year, that it fell that way, but next year, it just so happens that there was only the one, the June 1, that, where it isn't the Wednesday, the second Tuesday. Anyway, and then take a look at the holidays. I will put this on the agenda for next month, if you like to, if you want to review this. And then we also have the calendar, the other page is the calendar of proposed Committee of the Whole Meetings, which would be the, the first Tuesday, and that's not a conflict for you, correct? First Tuesdays are okay. Your problem is second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, take a look at these. There's in, highlighted in red are some potential additional holidays. We can remove other holidays and spread the wealth, if you like. So, that's more informational, and we will put this on next month's agenda unless you think we're ready to, to make decisions tonight.
And the Tuesday, November 8th, it's the election day, but we'll still have coverage in the office? We'll, because the building will be open, right?
It'll, obviously, it'll be open for that.
Yes.
And I always spend that day here. It is supposed to be a state holiday for, for state workers and state agencies, and of course, I'm not sure how far we want to trickle that down, so that's why it's on there as it is. Yeah, election date is a new one.
Yeah, so for the June meeting that interferes with mental health, we'll just move that to the week before?
Right, to the 14th, mm-hmm.
Well, it can't be the.
It's not really the week before, oh, I'm sorry, no, it, I'm sorry, that's not the 14th, what am I looking at? It would then be the 8th.
Well, do we want to go ahead and approve this tonight, or?
No, I wanna wait.
Want to take a look at these holidays and see?
Yeah, I'm not too keen on it.
Yeah, no, I, I really don't want to go with two additional holidays. I think we need to look carefully at what, what else is there. I know that the village doesn't take certain holidays that we do, so that sometimes creates some confusion in the building, but, you know, we do, we do close for Casimir Pulaski, and we do close for Columbus, which they do not. So, again, I give this to you for review so that we can figure that out, and, and the, and then we would change that June meeting. Okay, so be prepared to, to discuss that next month then. All right, next item is the initial discussion of a township tax levy. Nothing really to present yet, but we need to be conscious of the expenses that we're going to be doing. I think we have to be prepared that, you know, we'll probably go to the max allowable this year, and we are also, I'm having our legal counsel check into, we have, there is a levy number. We used to levy, apparently, for bridge and roads, and that's something that we should take a look at so that we don't get caught like this in the future on bridge repairs and so forth. So, I just want you to be conscious of that, be prepared, and if you have any particular thoughts on, on the levy process, this is something that we do by the end of the year, and next month, we can, we can deal with this in greater detail, and we can. can, we can go from there.
All right. As soon as you get a CPI number.
Right. And that's, that's always a little bit of a holdup.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Then, the next item is the appointment to the mental health board. So, I will read you what, you have it in your folders, but the resolution that I propose is Resolution of the Board of Trustees, Township of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, approving an appointment to the mental health board. Now there be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. That this board hereby approves the appointment of Joseph J. DeRozier, 8015 West 26th Street, North Riverside, Illinois, as a member of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board for a term commencing on October 13th and terminating on December 31st, 2022. All ordinances and resolution or part thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This resolution will be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption adopted, this would be adopted today, the 13th of October, 2021. If you want to know anything more about Joe, I do, I don't have his resume, but I have his letter of intent. For those who have never met him, he, as, as trustee Highlandbach already pointed out, he has, he has a, a knowledge from firsthand family situations of various mental health concerns for the community. He believes it's especially crucial to focus at this time because of the tremendous societal upheaval and health concerns surrounding the threat from COVID-19 and the associated challenges that have been presented. His professional background is in the media, specifically as a newspaper print and online journalist, working as a reporter, editor, manager, and web editor for community papers, as well as daily newspapers for the Chicago Sun-Times and the Chicago Tribune. More recently, and for the last six years, he's been the staff writer for the Chicago Dental Society, a professional association. He covered numerous governmental bodies in his work as a journalist. He's very familiar with the community, with the workings of governmental bodies, and budgeting and resource allocation, as well as the associated duties and responsibilities of board members serving the public. And he was responsible for the budgeting and day-to-day operations for multiple publications. He's also been involved in several community service and professional organizations, including he was the, he's a former president of the Suburban Chicago Press Association, a member of the Downers Grove Rotary, and member of the North Riverside Library Foundation. He's lived in the township for more than, more than 31 years and raised his two children here. So, with, along with his wife. So, he, I highly recommend him. I've known him for many years, and I think that he will be an asset to this board, and he is fulfilling an unexpired term. So, that being said, this resolution is up for, for a vote. Is there any discussion to it before we call for the Then, would clerk Dropko, would you please call the roll on this?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve Joseph DeRozier to the mental health board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the appointment of Joseph J. DeRozier to the mental health board. If there's no further discussion, then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And just for your information, I have included the annual treasures report, which was submitted to the county clerk. And it just reflects, it's a, it's a one-page summary of the audited financials that you've already seen. And you have in your mailboxes, the, the corrected, there was one minor correction to the audit report. So, you all have those now as well. The other point of information, I would ask that if any of you plan to participate in the virtual Township Officials of Illinois meeting to be held next month, let me know. There's a, there's some bonuses for registering by the end of this week. So, if you'll let me know, we can put in the registrations for all of you. They, um, so, yeah, the registration for the entire week is $99 per member. We are all members of the association. And the final deadline is the end of the month. So, any of you know that you're gonna want to participate that we, trustee Clark, trustee, uh, clerk Dropko, will you?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. All right, just let us know, and we can submit it all in one. Okay. Then we have come to the point of our meeting to approve the general, the warrants and pay the bills.
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for October 2021, in the amount of 21, I'm sorry, $25,605.15. As presented to this board, the 13th day of October, 2021.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the general warrants, or approve the general warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrant for October 2021, in the amount of $25,605.15. Are there any additions, corrections, questions? Then clerk Dropko, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, that the board ratify and authorize the payments of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for October 2021 in the amount of $854.20. The payroll warrant for October 2021, in the amount of $18,331.39. The health warrant for October 2021, in the amount of $2,463.01. Grants in the, in the, for October 2021, in the amount of $8,560. Petty cash in the amount of $150.41. General assistant warrants in the amount of $7,156.79. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant for October 2021, in the amount of 13, I'm sorry, $1,321.20. All of the above as presented to this board the 13th day of October, 2021.
Thank you for that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants for October of 2021. Utility warrant in the amount of $854.20. The payroll warrant in the amount of $18,331.39. The health warrant in the amount of $2,463.01. The grants warrant in the amount of $8,560. The petty cash warrant in the amount of $150.41. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $7,156.79. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,321.20. Hearing no questions? Then clerk Dropko, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandbach, to adjourn the meeting of the Riverside Township Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
There it is.